Okay. I'm calling the Tuesday, August 20th, 2024 meeting of the Esameadow Planning Board to order. Those in attendance are Pete Henderson, Russell Denble.
Terrell.
And we're joined by Planning Director.
Robert Chilla.
Thank you. So the first item, well, before I move on, I'm required by Mass General Law to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording the meeting or on Zoom. And if so, would you please state your name and the method in which you're recording? And once again, I'm required by Mass General Law to see if anyone in the audience or by Zoom is recording their, recording this meeting. And if so, please state your name and the method in which you are recording the meeting. Hearing none, we can move on. So I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the July 30th, 2024 open session minutes.
So moved.
That's it. Motion made, second and discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that, that passes. Mr. Clerk, under public hearings.
Case Z N dash 2024 dash zero one, proposed zoning bylaw amendment regarding commercial kenneling, allowing the use in an industrial zone district by special permit continued from six eighteen, two thousand twenty four.
So Rob, do you want to kind of set the stage on where we are in this process?
Sure, yeah. So Attorney Robert Ferris is actually in the audience right now, submits exhibits of what other towns do in regards to commercial kenneling. Some of the towns and the examples actually allow for it in residential districts. He also provides some draft language to consider adding to the bylaw, one of which includes kind of like a chart that shows the districts in which it should be, or I guess they're recommending where it should be allowed by special permit. He also included additional criteria to consider as conditions when reviewing commercial kenneling as a use. So I guess I'd probably turn it over to Attorney Ferris if you want to talk more about the change of these proposing to the board today.
I would. Mr. Ferris.
Would you like me to come up?
Yep, and please sign in. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good to be here. So a lot has, I had done a lot since our last meeting. I know I had requested an extension. I was definitely short on time. I was supposed to meet with a number of people and had to reschedule. So I had time to meet with everybody that I was going to meet with. I met with the owner of Good Dog Spot. I met with, which is a business in North Hampton and Chickapi. I met with Beth Triphone of Clark's Kenneling in Northbridge, Massachusetts. And I met with, can't remember her first name, but her last name was Pristine from a overnight kennel in Millbury, Massachusetts. And I honed in on Northbridge, Millbury, Westport, Westwood, because those all had similar population sizes, thirteen to sixteen, thirteen to seventeen thousand. I think East Long Meadows in the sixteen, almost seventeen thousand range. So I spoke to them and I've learned that Beth Triphone, the owner of Clark's Kennels, who I spoke to a number of people and they're all like, oh, talk to her. She's like the person to talk to about overnight kenneling and special permitting and stuff like that. So I spoke to her and she gave me a lot of insight into what her town did and how it worked out. And for her town in Northbridge, it was really interesting. She got a special permit and she was allowed to kennel in a residential district, which I thought like, that was like probably the worst zone to put a kennel in. And I've seen some case law where there's arguments about not having it in residential zone areas. But she was allowed to do that and apparently the, the tax revenue was so good that they allowed a secondary kennel to be opened where they put like a hundred, there was like a hundred dog, like hundred dogs in overnight kenneling, secondary location that opened up. Good Dog Spot, I know the same thing happened with them when they opened up their location. They opened up a second one in North Hampton because I guess the business was, was good and lucrative for them. I also did a site visit at fifteen Baldwin. To me, it, it's an industrial zone, but it's already set up for dog daycare. So I don't actually think that there's going to be a heck of a lot of difference with overnight kenneling. It certainly could be. I mean, if you, if we stick to strict pickup drop off times, I'm not so sure that there would be a huge difference in foot traffic. There's double doors accessible, a big.
So can I just interrupt you for one minute? So let's not put the cart before the horse.
Sure.
So let's kind of focus on what are the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaw?
Sure.
That you would foresee, because then the issue of whether she would get a special permit is something different. And that's when the location of the business, the way the facility is designed would come into play.
Sure. So we're looking for the bylaw on, to get the number, I have it here somewhere. But the bylaw that does not allow for kenneling, overnight kenneling, it actually doesn't, I don't think it allows for it in any district. We're looking to just get amended to either allow in commercial or industrial, or just specifically special permit, by special permit in an industrial zone.
He's referring to the used table, Mr. Chair, so three point, three dash one.
Yeah, that's the only, three dash one is the only, the only place that I believe really mentions overnight kenneling at all. And it's either SPA or N, and special permit obviously.
You do have one that's grandfathered.
Yeah, there is, there's one that's grandfathered, but if it's by grandfather, then you know, I'm not sure that it just applies to being allowed altogether. I think it's just for that specific property, at least that's my understanding.
Yeah. So you're, so the amendment proposed is to change the existing zoning requirement that prohibits overnight kenneling. And you would, you would want to see it amended to allow overnight kenneling in industrial slash commercial zones.
By special permit.
By special permit.
Yeah, it'll also insert some criteria into the used table as well. So other types of uses sometimes have like a list of criteria that have to be met.
Yeah.
So you know, he would, he gave us a lot to work with. So I guess what I guess suggests the board is that, you know, we could also kind of continue this again to September and then come back there with language that's actually ready to be considered by the town council if the board sees that as okay.
But yeah, I agree with that procedural, how we do it. But I guess I'd like to get your planning expertise on different conditions that we would put in.
So just.
Not on the special permit, but on the law.
Yeah. So on the zone in regards to the use or, okay. I mean, pretty much everything with that specific business is tied into the use.
Okay.
So I think the, the best way to regulate that type of business is through the special permit. So there's not really a whole lot extra that goes into it. So say if it was something that would require development, obviously you'd want more underlying circumstances to be applied in the situation. But I think because most of these businesses go into a space that's already built or they're tenants. I, I would say just the criteria for the special permit would be necessary. But again, the board would want to be careful, I guess, about which districts they want to see this type of business going into. And I think the industrial district would be an acceptable place for this type of business.
Board questions, comments?
I would, if I even considered it, would be industrial only.
I, I was actually going to put industrial only, but I didn't want to seem redundant by being like, oh, just put it in the district I wanted in, opening. So that, that would be my, what I was going to do.
That's kind of a good guess.
Yeah. I thought industrial made sense, so.
That's kind of a strange area over there because the industrial zone was made originally along where the railroad tracks were. And we have people living in really close proximity. We've also had a problem in the past with
Sure.
Personnel not being properly utilized and a dog suffered a death and there was a lawsuit.
Yep.
The stance pretty heavy in my mind.
Yes.
Point in time.
Absolutely. I, I sympathize with that as someone who has dogs. I, I looked into that. I don't want, I'm not going to talk about that specific case, but I did note that there is, from a legal perspective, a law that is proposed, that has been passed, that's passed the House in Massachusetts. It's going to go to the Senate, that's going to put some, some provisioning in place. Ultimately, that's some time away, but there aren't really any standards right now in, in the, in the business. There's not actually any like real standard.
Like separating dog by size and that type of aggressiveness or?
So there's, there's industry standard and then there's official standard. There's industry standard and the industry standard is for every twelve to fifteen dogs, there needs to be one staff. And I put some of these in my proposals, but they need to be segregated based sometimes on gender, sometimes on breed, on size. And the small dogs are in one totally separate area versus the other dogs that are, the bigger dogs that are in another completely separate area. I would also say for what it's worth, that I know Ms. Curly and her staff have been working together for over twenty years. And I know that they have at least six staff, which is more than adequate. And they, again, they've been together for over twenty years. And I, like, I checked it out and it looked good to me, but I know you're not going to take my word for it, but I can say that they're very experienced in, in this field.
Just going to ask a quick question, Russell, if that's okay. Do you know what other type of licensing is required, I guess, from like health department or animal control for these types of businesses?
So it's just a kenneling license. But animal control comes once yearly to inspect. However, because of the past issues, I had proposed the possibility, and then that's obviously up to animal control if, and when we get there. But that they could come every three months at first and then reduce it down to every six months, then reduce it down to every year as appropriate, as needed.
What type of training or licensing do the people that are employed or have to have?
They typically have experience in that field. They typically have some kind of behavioral psychology of dog training in the past. They have, I have met people that worked in these places that have degrees in, in animal psychology. I know that Ms. Curly and her staff have been doing this for, for twenty plus years. I don't know their specific degrees. They may probably have some certificates and stuff like that, but I'll definitely inquire into that further. Or I could just allow her to speak to that too today if needed.
So the legislature has adjourned for the session, so Ali's law unfortunately did not make it through again.
Okay.
And it would have been great to have, standards are in there. I think one thing, so Ali's law really came up as a result of, yep, the incident here in Esameadow. And so the individual who then took over that site, I think we put about twenty four different conditions on. So we would probably, as we move through the process, look to what those conditions are as well. But let's kind of just get back to the, to the zoning component of it. Do you have any specific questions on the zoning?
No, I would echo, I think it's an industrial, that seems like a safe parameter to put it in with a special permit, right? Because then you can, I don't think we shouldn't not have it, but I think we can easily condition it and make it the way with special.
Yeah, safest with a special permit.
Can I ask that case you were just referencing, do you have like an address for that one or do you remember what any of the business was?
Well, it's North Main Street and it's right across from Kellyford, yeah.
Are you guys referring to where that incident occurred previously?
I just wanted to use that as a reference, see what type of conditions the board issued to kind of see if that would help out with this.
I can't remember the exact address.
There's some great resources, I will say, that have been put out because there's sort of a lack of real specific guidance. There's a couple of resources that I'd put in my packet that I think are really good. I actually looked at them and I was like, I'm like, you know, there's always a website that you can go to, but this is like really comprehensive, like industry standards, what's best practice.
In this right here.
Yeah, by highly educated people. There's a place called like IBPSA, which is like a whole organization that dedicated to safety and the, of these kinds of places and the dog gurus and stuff. But if you get a chance to look at them, they're, they're fantastic, truly.
So I, I'm going to echo what these gentlemen had to say. I don't think residential is an appropriate use.
I, I'm in.
For that. So moving forward, we would ask Rob to draft the proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw.
Sure.
Which we can hear at our September twentieth.
I believe, let me get the exact date for you so we don't mess that one up. September seventeenth is.
September seventeenth.
Yep.
We can do that, our September seventeenth meeting. It then needs to go to town council.
Yep.
For their action one way or the other. I don't know how they will act, but if they, you know, if they approve of it, then Mrs. Curly can come in and seek the special permit.
Great.
For it. But this is, you know, we did continue this public hearing on this. So I do want to open it to the public if there's no other further questions for Attorney Ferris. All right, if there's anyone in the audience who wants to.
A comment from anybody in the audience?
Mr. Page.
Thank you. Ralph Page, one thirty seven P's Road. I know a lot of the criteria, if this goes through, will be under the special permit, which really needs to be done on site specific. But I do think there is some basic criteria, maybe size of kennels. You know, a large dog goes in a kennel, no smaller than this size, that the dogs are, you know, I know it's overnight kenneling, but is there a limit to the length of time the dog can be kennelled there? And again, these are just questions off of the top of my head that are coming up. I would highly suggest that we reach out to the other commercial kennel in town and see what's going on there, what works for them, what doesn't. Like I said, I know they've been there for numerous years. And I guess my main concern is just to make this as safe and as good as possible for the animals. And like I said, I, I'm sure it will be, but it's always nice to have the criteria ahead of time. And again, some of it should be, I think, in there and some of it should be under the special permit.
Thank you.
Look forwards to what we draft.
Thank you. I did put some of the spacing and sizing requirements or proposals of, of the kennels. They do range from, and I'll try not to get into too much detail, but small, medium, large, extra large. And they obviously go by dog breed and what people want.
Excuse me, one, are those state guidelines that you put in?
Again, I don't think there is any specific guidelines, to be honest. I know and I, I understand that. And that's why I'm using the, the IBPSA, which is the international sort of board, where they handle what's specific. And I got the, the measurements from all the other places and they're pretty uniform in terms of, so there is, again, there's a lot of industry standard and precedent there. It just hasn't been formalized by law. And I think it'll be, it'll end up being the industrial standard that they use to apply to the law, from my understanding, what they use to gather their parameters.
I'm looking for specific things, like ten dogs of a hundred pounds here, eight, eight dogs of fifty pounds here. The length of kenneling, like Mr. Page brought up. And also the licensing. Not so much, you know, talking about the integrity of people, but the licensing of people that have the knowledge and can go into where there's five or eight hundred pound dogs and they start fighting. How do you handle it? You know, that's, that's not something easy to do. So that there's a lot of things that, there's just no guidelines for.
Understood. We'll have to work our way through it.
Yeah.
Sure.
So is there any on the audience who would like to address this?
I can probably explain the guidelines he's looking for and things like that. If you refer another time.
So I, I think it's more of a factor to go into the special permit process, so. So we still really have to vote to continue the meeting.
Yes.
So, but I think we're making progress because you've heard kind of the districts that we think is more appropriate and some of the possible conditions moving forward down, down the road. Did you have something you want to add?
Well, we just need to vote to keep the meeting open.
Right. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Got a second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we will have you back on the seventeenth. There will be an, an official amendment that we will.
Draft.
Yes. Draft and publish. And you know, if you have other things you want, you believe are appropriate, please, you know, reach our planning director in plenty of time. But I do think that we're kind of moving the process along and, yeah.
Fantastic.
All right.
Thank you so much for your time, all right? See you next month.
Thank you.
Again, thank you for, thank you for all the information.
Yeah, definitely read all those.
And if you can look through it, please do. I think that it answers some of the, the kind of basic concerns and the directions you guys are heading. So give it a shot if you can, and I certainly appreciate the time and hope you guys have a great night.
Mr. Terrell.
Right. Russ. We have to vote to continue it.
We did. We did.
With the time and everything?
Yeah. September seventeenth at six o'clock. Next meeting.
Yeah.
Case SP dash two thousand twenty four dash zero eight, request for amendment of special permit, SP dash two thousand twenty, two thousand nine dash zero zero one one. For Frank Rash Chilla.
For Chilla.
Chilla, thank you. Landscaping at three twenty nine Westwood Ave, Sister's Parcel ID five dash two dash zero. For Homebase Trade located in the RB zoning district applicant Francesco Chilla, I'm sorry, three twenty nine Westwood Ave, Esameadow Mass, zero one zero two eight.
Rob, do you want to?
Sure, yeah. So unfortunately, since Mr. Fonseca and Ms. Serswell weren't able to make tonight's meeting, we only have three members present from the planning board. State law requires that special permits have a super majority of the board present in order to hear a special permit hearing. Because of this, the board has no choice but to continue it to the next scheduled playing board meeting, which will be September seventeenth. You don't have to announce a specific time because I lost Russ flexibility of scheduling it within the meeting parameters when convenient. Thank you.
So just on behalf of anyone who is here on Zoom or in the audience who wanted to discuss this issue. Unfortunately, technology doesn't always cooperate. One of our members was going to Zoom in and is, the technology where he is, is not available at this time for him to be able to do so. He had every intention to, to participate, so. So a motion to continue is in order until the meeting on September seventeenth?
Yep.
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item.
Case Z N dash two thousand twenty four dash zero four, for the consideration of amendments to fourth, four fifty dash ten point three definitions and Article X, ground mounted photovoltaic installations of the Esameadow zoning bylaw, petitioner Beckelisi, sixty Center Square, Esameadow, Mass, zero one zero two eight.
So I'll make a, someone give me a motion to open the public hearing on this one?
Make a motion open?
To have a second, second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, open public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Should I approach?
Yes, you should. Approach the bench.
Thank you all for hearing this item. In our work in town hall, we are trying to accommodate folks that are trying to come in and do business. And we have been approached several times by folks who want to create some solar arrays. But there was a conflict in the language in the definition section among large scale ground mounted solar rotate installations. And then also the dimensional requirements and the definition of roof mounted. So if you go, do you have the, so I see you have a letter from Jesse Belcher to me.
Yep.
Changes are in the email.
They should be. I want, okay, you do have a copy of it for yourself?
Yeah. Or do you have it?
I have it in front of me. I want to make sure you have it.
Yep. So the copy that has the email, has a cover letter, email, and then at the end you have the changes to language. That's what the board members have right now.
Right. So if we look at by law four fifty, section ten point eleven for area dimensional density requirements. We're looking to make amendments that strike roof mounted from the definition of medium and large scale ground mounted solar rotate installations. Because by definition, the ground mounted could include a parking company, but we have roof mounted defined elsewhere. So we don't want to create confusion when we're making a distinguish in the definition section between ground mounted and the roof mounted. And then additionally, they should be allowed not only as an accessory use, but as a private, yes, general use. So those are the amendments there. And then let's further differentiate the definition of roof mounted solar rotex. If you go to that definition, we specifically fall out that a solar rotate system that is structurally mounted to the roof of a building, not a structure. Because a building, when you're looking at like procurement law and, and things like that, is something that has four sides and a roof. Whereas a structured doesn't necessarily have to have a roof. So we slash structure and replace it with building to distinguish that this is a roof mounted.
How about the parking lot ones?
That, that would be considered a canopy.
Okay.
And so they are explicitly identified in the medium and large scale ground mounted definitions below.
Canopy mounted, okay.
Parking canopy. Right. You have four, right? You have four sides and it's not a roof, it's the.
It's a canopy, right? Just to want to, just want to leave them out, that's all.
Leave them out altogether.
And you have.
Any other questions?
And you have a letter, and there's a letter from town council who is endorsing these changes, believe that it'll make it more clear for the town.
Yeah.
Right. And, and for the applicants, and that's what's most important, so that we are avoiding conflicts and that we're able to move forward in an expedited fashion to make sure that we retain our reputation as a business friendly community and we can move forward without complications, problems or conflicts.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this or on Zoom? I'll ask again if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Did I, did I recognize you?
Currently, there is a definition under eleven point two for building. It's any structure having a roof supported by columns or walls and intended for the shelter, housing or exposure of any individual, animal, process, equipment, goods or materials of any kind or nature. For the purpose of this definition, roof shall include an awning or, or any similar covering, whether or not permanent in nature. Or building shall be construed where the context requires. So if I'm reading building correctly, that includes canopy. For the purpose of this definition.
Because it doesn't say permanent roof.
I, I mean, that, that's the way I am interpreting it. And again, if that's the case, it just seems, I, I understand what, what we're trying to do. I'm just not sure switching the structure to the building.
Building.
Definition that we have actually works.
So what you're saying is it might take away the canopy type of issue?
Yeah, what I'm saying is it sounds to me like under the description of building, it includes canopy.
Okay, then why can't we just change it to building then, from structure?
Well, that's what we were just saying.
Yeah.
But it was specifically said that ground mounted, like a carport or whatever, that's not considered a building. But I consider something with a roof and four holes holding it up to be a building based by that definition.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Would you like to add?
So there's a few things.
Okay.
I, I would love to see a bylaw created for photovoltaic arrays instead of just Article ten, ground mounted. And just list and say photovoltaic arrays, roof mounted, allowed by right, bump, bump, bump. Ground mounted, here's the regulations. And that way there, when someone actually opens it up and they're looking for something, right now, the only thing they can find is ground mounted. And they're searching for roof mounted going, well, is it allowed? Is it not allowed? Where if we have it all under Article ten, I think it'd be a little bit easier. But with that, I also understand that this year ends in a five, which means all the bylaws have to be looked at, so.
Good point.
I mean, I, I see no problem in, in that type of language.
Just a suggestion, like I said, I have nothing against, you know, changing the definition and whatnot. I'd just love to see.
Something added to it.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Go ahead. That says, so he does bring up some good points. I think the bylaw itself is pretty good at the moment as written, but I definitely think we should include language that exempts solar rays of a certain size from needing review. Because chapter forty eight zoning act, section, I think it's six A, talks about exemptions and one of them is solar. So you're, you have to allow them by right. You can do site plan review.
We, we learned that.
Exactly. I'm sure you were aware of that. But I think, you know, medium scale, it says the smallest is two thousand one hundred square feet for an array. So we can make, we can add language that states clearly that anything less than that is allowed by right. Because we can't really touch it at that point. I do want to make the comment in regards to the definition of roof mounted solar voltage installation. I think the definition as presented, taking out the word structure, replacing it with building is probably the best move. I guess in terms of the park. Um, I guess in terms of the parking canopy for medium scale and large scale. I know in other towns, so I come from Amherst before this where they regulate solar via special permit still. And usually for parking canopies, that kind of fits within a sphere of. Types of arrays that would fit into the permitting category of ones you have to regulate. Usually they don't make them as small as what would constitute a small scale solar array. If you're making a parking canopy, usually they're pretty big, like they cover, I don't know if you've been to the ones at UMass. But there's a parking lot right off of uh. It's near the dorms. I forgot which street it is. Mullen Center, not that far from Mullen Center. They cover like a hundred, two hundred spots in sections.
Smith and Wesson has one.
Exactly, so whoever is doing these. Whoever does these parking canopies, they're not gonna be, they're probably gonna fit within the definition of medium and large scale ground mounted solar anyways. But the definition's kind of been expanded to include parking canopies within them. And the reason for that is to kind of make a mechanism that allows for us to regulate them because they fit within this definition. But I do think it is important to kind of distinguish between roof mounted to where it's bigger than two thousand one hundred square feet. So say you have a giant factory building that has full canopy roof mounted solar. I think we should insert language that talks about the threshold for where we regulate that. Usually towns don't do that because it's on a building footprint. You're not taking away area outside of the building to put these things. That's usually where the biggest trouble comes because of how you're gonna design your stormwater, you know, how it's gonna affect the natural environment, et cetera. Um, at least with roof mounted, there's already that building footprint there. You're just building on top of it. So I think that's something else the board needs to consider too, and my. Personal advice would be to just allow roof mounted by right. And to regulate the ground mounted and freestanding parking canopy solar rays.
The the problem could be, I mean, I I have no problem. I like solar.
Yeah.
I went to school for it, it all that stuff. Um, the problem could be is adjoining properties with this huge reflective material.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that we need to regulate or need to be able to put in a special permit.
So that's why if you stuck to, so if you include roof mounted into the category of medium and large scale. It has to be of that certain size to where you'd want to be regulated by. You can't do it by special part, but you could do it through site planner view. And which you can still conditions for a use that's allowed by right. That's probably a good path you can take with that. You could also add a condition to another section of the bylaw where it states that. You know, outside of allowing this one specific array by site planner view. Carte blanche across town, you have to have some sort of screening in place for roof mounted solar, so it doesn't cause issues to traffic or. Vehicles and stuff like that.
Or people that live near it.
Yeah.
Look at it all day long.
Exactly, and the solar glare can be dangerous, like if you're going on Route Two near Lemonster. It's, I think it's the array that's like on that hill directly faces Route Two as you're driving by, I mean. Screening could definitely benefit that type of rate, but I think. When you put extra restrictions on roof mounted solar, it gets really tricky. Because people could challenge that in court and just say, well, we're not really taking away any vegetative areas. We're just putting us on top of the existing building. Like they can come in and say, we want to put. Panels that cover this ten thousand square foot building. And the courts can look at that and say, well, you know, it does promote renewable energy and you're not really taking away any sort of vegetative areas around the building. So we're just gonna overturn this and allow it by right. I kind of seen other towns skirt with that idea, but the attorney general didn't really like it very much.
So what I'm hearing is um. That I think we should continue this.
Oh, yeah.
Because there seems to be uh other things that we should probably incorporate all at one time.
I think um.
Have further discussion of?
Yeah, and I think we should clarify what types of projects are exempt from the bylaw too. Um, just to bring up Ralph's point because that would make it less confusing for folks. And we shall also discuss. How we want to regulate roof mounted solar rays, because they're typically the ones that have the issues with the glare. Um, as opposed to the ones on the ground, so.
So there's, you're you're not gonna win in court anyway, but you could try.
You should.
As we learned, um. Anyone else wish to address this before we make a motion to continue?
I I have no problem with what's been brought to us today as far as those terms being changed.
Yeah.
But evidently, there seems to be some other issues like what Ralph said. We should make it clearer and easier to deal with when somebody walks in our door.
And deal it.
And here it is.
One time, yeah.
Right.
Do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
You um say the date you want to tune it to, sorry.
I'll do it the one after the seventeenth.
Uh, the one after the seventeenth, let's see.
You're on vacation.
I will be out of the country on that day, but the fifteenth.
I knew you were going away at some point in time.
Yeah, the fifteenth, I will be back for that.
Okay.
Yeah. It's okay with you?
It it's fine. I am, I am going to be at the meeting in your place. Fifteenth, if you wanted to do it for that date anyway, since I'm the uh applicant quote unquote.
Uh, so you mean the first, right? Yeah, if the board wanted to be done the first, I could provide the language beforehand and then um. Deputy manager.
Together.
Let's do it together. The fifteenth.
Yep, sounds good to me.
All right, motion uh made, it was seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Good discussion. Mr. Terrell.
Business. Case A and R dash two thousand twenty four dash zero six. Request for endorsement that approval is not required under the subdivision control law applicant Michael Smith, one seventy seven Vineland Ave, some metal mass zero one zero two eight.
So um Jamie, can I ask you to uh make me a panelist? I'm actually in the attendees right now on Zoom. I was gonna screen share some stuff. I will make sure I'm on mute uh once I'm let in. Okay, so we don't kill people's ears. All right, I'm on mute now.
What are we moving here?
Uh, I might have to allow.
This is the A and R. Under new business.
Nope, just did it.
Oh.
All right, so I'm gonna pull up the A and R plans on your screen, um just so people in the audience can see if they turn their head that way a little bit. Um. Okay, so in this case, um. He's creating three new lots. Uh, let me try to zoom in a little bit more here. So lot C, D, and E. Um, after reviewing this, when it was submitted to my office, all three lots comply with the minimum. Square foot requirements as well as the frontage requirements. Um. They're removing existing shed that was split between kind of this lot right here. Um. And I believe one of the buildings encroaches just a little bit on the setback. I think it's this one right here. But at this point, you know, you can't really deny it because they're making the lots conforming. And the lot line that's closest to the building, I think it's this one right here. You can't really do much about changing that because. The building is already in existence, and if they were to modify even further, it would make the lots not conforming again, so. I guess from my comments, I have no issues with this A and Rs presented and uh I recommend the board move it forward to be endorsed.
What did it look like before?
So.
Just curious.
I can pull up a side light view. I did not look at the lots before.
So I think last year or the year before, this board voted on establishment of uh three lots.
Mm-hmm.
That started on Vineland and wrapped around to Donald on along Worthy.
Yep.
Um. So.
So that'd be these.
Yeah.
On two, three.
Yeah. So I just wanna just. Uh, make note that um. Uh, my deceased brother and his wife owned property at forty six Donald Ave. I spoke to Mr. Smith to see if they were a butters and whether I could, well. Whether they were butters and subsequently whether that would take me out of voting on this, and it does not.
Okay.
So just wanted to make note of that, so.
And where were the original lines?
So uh it looks like it was, I'll pull this back up on the screen, but it looked like it was one parcel.
Oh.
What I'm seeing, so they're they're creating three new parcels.
Okay.
Um, and just to make a correction to what I said earlier, they actually comply with the setbacks for all three buildings.
Right.
So that's a mistake on my part, but. I would say, Mr. Chair, that. The uh division of land here um is definitely acceptable for approval not required and to be endorsed by the plane board.
I have a motion on to endorse the plan.
So moved.
For a second.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Final.
Right, right. Case A and R dash two thousand twenty four dash zero seven request for endorsement was not required. Under the subdivision control law applicant Michael Smith, seventy six Alpine Ave, you saw metal mass zero one zero two eight.
I'm gonna pull up the other set of plans, same applicants. So this one actually has the historic lot lines in dash. So you can kind of see like all these little lots right here.
Oh.
That's what the lot used to look like.
Five thousand square foot lots.
Exactly, so they're combining all these lots. Each one is about ten thousand square feet. Um, I believe it's in the rez C, so it complies with frontage, it complies with square footage for all three lots that are being created here. The only not conforming that's being created is the house that's really close to the street, but they can't really do much to. Move the house away or to change the lot line there, so. I would say this is another example of uh the lots becoming conforming. Um, it definitely would fit the A and R um. Approval, Mr. Chair.
I think it clears up a lot of really. You know, unbillable five thousand square foot lots, a good plan.
You have two billable lots to the right there. And they have the appropriate frontage so they can construct as long as they meet the setback requirements.
Yep, yep.
Kind of a motion to uh endorse the plan.
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next item.
Uh, violation of special permit complaint received about petitioner for S P dash two thousand twenty four dash zero four. Sesca Cote, two eighty North Main Street, exceeding the allowable area in which she could operate her business.
So um, Mr. Chair, the reason why I brought this onto the attention of the boards is because we receive complaints to my office um in regards to. The individual who had that special point approved a couple of months ago for massage therapy. Um. They're exceeding the allotted area that the board approved. They're actually conducting their business in shared common areas in the building. And we had one other business complaint about that directly to the building department. But since we're now without a building commissioner, I figure I bring his attention to the playing board who. Could authorize staff to issue a letter to them, having them comply uh with the special permit. I don't have the exact um conditions that they are uh violating on top of my head, but I know. On the approved floor plans, there was a room circled. In which the applicant indicated that's where the business would be operating out of within the building overall. According to what this uh complainant told us. That applicants kind of going out above and beyond that room into shared common areas that other businesses utilize as well. So I was gonna ask the board if you would like for me to. Start drafting this letter and send it to this applicant, asking them to comply. Um, and then go from there, or what approach the board would want me to take in this situation?
Who's the owner of the building? That the reminder building?
I think it's the old reminder building, yes, but I don't know who the owner is off the top of my head.
So the owner is Chris and uh Dan Buendo.
Yep.
I think probably. They sell the building?
It's worse, no, I don't think they did.
Oh. We were also informed that um the complaint.
There's a sign.
Yeah.
That went by it today. There's a sign saying, you space for lease, call Chris.
Yeah, so I see him at the gym all the time. He had, didn't go through.
So I think I would start with the owner of the building.
Okay.
Indicate that, and if you don't get anywhere within a week, then I would. Follow the letters indicating they're out of compliance and we'll hold a hearing on it.
Rob, what part of the buildings is happening in the, the walk in the back or the the walk in the?
Trend where it's, it's like um. I I would have to see the plans in front of me. It looked like a small. Maybe a room about half the size of this one, so it wasn't like a huge space already. So I think this person just kind of went out. And they're doing like group classes and stuff like that from what I've heard.
Oh, okay.
Um, I will try to reach out to the landlord. I'll probably give them a call, phone here back from them, email, phone.
Yeah.
I'll uh issue a letter. I have to send it to the applicant though, because that's the person who. Um, is using the special part for their business.
I have Chris's phone number if you.
Okay.
Want to take it after the meeting.
I'll definitely take it after the meeting. Thank you.
Sure you do.
Or I can call him. Okay, next item.
Uh, informal discussion Ralph Page, one thirty seven Peace Road.
Mr. Page, please step forward and sign in.
I will sign in, thank you. Ralph Page, one thirty seven Peace Road. My friend, this letter's from the guy that bought my parents' house.
Oh.
So, um. I asked. Rob to put me on tonight for an informal discussion. Um, I have three items. It's not really um a matter of a discussion. It's basically a public comment portion. Um, the first thing is public comment. I would like the board to consider um on your agenda. Putting in a public comment session so that if anyone from the public has anything. Give them three minutes to come in and talk to you because occasionally there's just small things that pop up. And instead of being on the agenda, it's easier to come for a public comment, so that would be my first request. Um, my second request is through the board, I have. Just a handout, um, two, three, there's four of you. And this is just a notification um back on April second, two thousand and nine. Dan Hellier was the building commissioner, and this is just his determination stating that I am a preexisting. Nonconforming business that is allowed to operate at one thirty seven Peace Road. It's come to my attention that uh not everyone is aware of this, so I wanted to make aware of this. Um, the second page is just a little photo reminiscent back prior to nineteen sixty. What the actual house looked like, that large building there was actually the original barn. Because the smoking materials are burnt to the ground, someone from Lee Street flipped a cigarette in years ago.
Was just looking up at the coming up Peace Hill, Peace Road. Is your house on the right?
Basically a uh Lee Street, like you're standing at the brook and looking.
Okay, I'll stand the book, okay.
Cause you can barely see the house behind the barn. So you can see my, well, what I call the carriage house or the garage there and.
The barn burn.
I want to say it was late nineteen fifty or so.
I don't remember the barn.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is just more um a little reminiscent for you. Um, things have changed a lot over the years. Um, but the other item is I just wanted to notify you at some point I will be looking to come in. I'm not sure when me and Rob will set it up. Um, for a chapter forty A, section six um finding. Um, which is basically would a new structure be more detrimental to the neighborhood? Um, the reason for being here is just basically to let you know that that is my plans down the road. And I will be coming in and whenever you get a chance, if you want to bring up Mass General Law, it's great reading. It'll put you to sleep almost any night. Um, it's also a section in our bylaw. Chapter four fifty, section three point four is preexisting and section three five. Uh, outlines it very much like the Mass General Law, uh forty A.
Ralph, who? So there's immunists, there's no record found, found no evidence that a landscaping company or any business existed on that property prior to to adoption?
I think what it was is uh Dan basically crafted it after doing his full research and all. But there's no, at least at the time, there was no location to put it.
I'm a witness.
Gave me the the determination, I believe it went into an envelope or went somewhere. It doesn't matter where, um, like I said, I kept.
Had ran a business out of there my whole life.
Yeah.
Hmm, and then you were there.
Yeah, moved in in nineteen fifty and started a business shortly after Laurel Cleaning Service and. You've been there ever since. Um, but again, I think it's very similar to um. Like high tech transmission. Um, you know, they were a small two car garage. They got torn down, a larger building put up countryside store.
Yep.
Uh, same basic thing, grandfathering, but this is all contained under chapter forty A, and like I said, without reading it. It it's hard to understand, and even when you read it, even as an attorney, there's always questions, so. Um, the third thing.
That's why there's so many lawyers.
And there's so many different opinions.
Happy to be one of them.
Um, I mean, like um uh Gloucester, uh Gale versus Gloucester, you know, it comes out and you think that's the. The end all, and then all of a sudden another court case comes out and they find something different and all, but. Um, but the last thing I wanted to discuss, and I know it's coming up, but it's not a. Public meeting or discussion, um, flag lots. So one was.
Can we just?
You should just get to the.
Just. If if we can just go back for a sec.
Okay.
Okay. So the third thing is a.
That's my computer rendering of it.
Okay, of what you anticipate if you're successful, the property to look like.
Exactly.
This exists, this exists, all this exists and these exist. Instead of a whole building.
Yeah.
Sitting there right now.
Well, I guess.
It's thinking to be even further away from the water too, from the wet, wetlands.
So the ten currently, the hoop house is currently closer than what that building would be. I think it's three feet. Um, but again, when we come in, uh, Rob Levek would be here. He would set out the plans. You would set out all the topography and all of that stuff. For you, I just wanted you to know going forwards. Um, I don't mind waiting to talk about flag lots. Um, my only concern was just the one that was just done behind me. But again, if you don't mind, I would be happy to talk to you at that.
Wait till we get that. But, but the ultimate, as I've been hearing, so you currently do not have a building that could store all your existing vehicles for the business that operates on that or operates out of that site.
No.
Okay. And so it is your desire to put up a larger building that would store all of the, um, vehicles you need for your business.
So, yes, but going forwards, like I said, this was just to let you know about it. This wasn't to, to bring it up. This wasn't to go any further. This was basically to say, hey, take a look at forty A.
Okay.
Um.
Alrighty.
Said, I didn't want to get into anything in depth or anything like that. It was just more to say, I'm anticipating, I don't know if it'll be September, October, I, I'm not sure. We're still going through conservation and stuff like that. So.
Mr. Chair, can I add something to this?
Sure.
Uh, so Mr. Page actually, um, filed administrative appeal with the zoning board of appeals. There's three issues here. So the first issue is the use, which from that letter that you're looking at kind of proves that the use was pre-existing, not conforming anyways. Uh, that was a determination made by a building commissioner in two thousand and nine. So the use of the property, you know, the business, um, home-based trade um, is still allowed to continue. Uh, no issues there. The second issue deals with the size of the building that's being proposed. Um, it's larger than the primary structure, which is the house. The assessor's records kind of show that's always been like the primary use of the property. So it's a second issue the zoning board's gonna consider when they're doing their hearing. And the third issue is the law coverage for outdoor storage of equipment, which in the bylaw for home-based trade is six percent, but, um, that's some debate the zoning board's gonna do when they have their public hearing on, um, September ninth. So if the zoning board were to approve the appeal that Mr. Page is putting forward, then he can come get the special permit for the building. But the zoning board denies the appeal. Mr. Page had to get a variance with the zoning board. So those are kind of the two avenues that he would have to take depending on how the zoning board decides at this appeal hearing.
So isn't it your plan to put your trucks inside the building?
Yeah.
Yes.
So the issue here is just the size of the building. So typically an accessory structure is one that's smaller than the main structure. So that's kind of where we have to decide how the zoning board would interpret that language in regards to this project.
How many accessory structures have been built in this town?
I'm sure a lot.
Twice that, and this is, this is.
Again, I.
Pause after.
Getting beyond.
Heading beyond what we need to be.
I'm just saying, there's a lot.
My intent.
It's fine. And I think that's for a public hearing for the board. That's possible for it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I look forward to talking to you about flag lots if we allow it. Thank you.
Oh, we'll allow it. So, okay. Um, zoning discussion, go ahead, Mr.
Uh, zoning discussion, some of these items may not be discussed due to time constraints, flag lots, site plan review waiver, property upkeep and appearance, drone bylaw.
Alrighty, uh, so let's start with flag lots.
Sure. So Mr. Chair, I have a map that I T generously made for me that shows all the flag lots.
Oh, great. Okay.
I will go ahead and find that real quick.
Did we come up with a numerical number?
Uh, yes, and I believe it's pretty low, um, from what I've seen. So let me just screen share real quick. All right. So here is the flag lot map. Once I can get it open, if it will open. There we go. So everything that's in red is a flag lot. From what you can see on this map, oh, sorry. There's not very many there. Um, and when I counted the number of flag lots in town, uh, this is leaving out plus or minus two or three flag lots, but there's about twenty of them altogether. So I think the number of flag lots in town isn't as high as we originally thought. So I guess the question for the board is because the number of flag lots in town isn't as frequent as you would think it is. Um, and mind you, they did this search by checking uh, frontage, uh, size of lots compared to the minimum lot size in that district. So there's a lot of cross referencing that went into play here. I guess I would ask the board, do you think it's worth pursuing creating a flag lot by law at this point? Knowing that there's not more than twenty in the entire town.
So Mr. Puttersen, I know you were vocal on that.
I'm dead set against it, period. That's, I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it.
So what would be, I, I guess, what are the pros and cons of?
This, um.
Of, of proceeding or not proceeding?
I guess a big pro deals with the nationwide issue of housing shortage. It allows for lots that are regularly shaped already to have buildings put on them. Usually for flag lots, you would see it only for a single family or two family in most municipalities throughout the state. So it, it would be generally limited to those. Uh, you could also make more use of lands of a certain size by allowing for lots that maybe don't have more than a hundred feet to have two or three parcels carved out of them. That's the biggest pro that I can think of at the moment. In terms of cons, there really isn't a con in this bylaw, but I could see where Pete's concern is in regards to those, uh, backyard flag lots. So the ones that we can see that, you know, is behind everybody else's in a little block that's bound by four roads all around. I could see, you know, if you limit it to just a district where you have large lots only, so res double A or res A, that would be the best place for a flag lot. Um, anything smaller than that, res B or res C wouldn't be the best choice. And mind you, most of these flag lots only exist in res A or res double A anyways, which are typically are a larger lot residential areas. So really it's indifferent at this point. The board could pursue it if you want to. You could push it for another time. You could just not pursue it. I don't think it's really a detrimental issue. But that's just the result of the analysis and I guess I'll leave it up to the board to make a decision on how you want to proceed.
Well, more of these could be created though. Like if somebody chopped up lots, right?
So they wouldn't be able to. They're going to be created if they have the appropriate amount of frontage in the district where they're going to be located. And so say if you were to create one through an A and R, they would have to have the frontage no matter what. Otherwise it's not billable lot and technically not even in A and R.
So we'll never get more than these.
Probably not.
Okay. Because I think that we have seen a rash of A and Rs come through in the, you know, past seven months that I've been here. I, I've seen quite a few A and Rs moving for this board. And I think that the flag lot gives you the ability to create another type of billable lot that you wouldn't otherwise be able to create because of the frontage limitations.
Yeah, no, that's correct. And I said that earlier too. I just think that it's up to you as the board to make that call if you want to pursue with this now, later, or not at all.
So, so two people have a flag lot. One of them's gonna interfere in the living, the quality of living for the people around them. The other one's not going to. So you don't approve one, but you approve the other and you get sued because it's still a flag lot. Lot of ambiguity here.
You could make a requirement where you would have to have it be a certain distance away from abutting residential units. I mean, typically the biggest thing with flag lots is that people have, um, screening requirements. So say if you're in a flag lot, the part of the houses has to be screened from the road. Um, the driveway has to be uh, wide enough to where it can fit emergency vehicles, um, stuff like that. Typically flag lots, you try to prevent the backyard flag lot and they would typically go in lots where you would have expansive open space already, where there wouldn't be other houses nearby.
I, I understand, but I could just see a problem. I'm just, it's just not, I just don't have the taste for it. I'm sorry. This. I wouldn't want it to have it. I wouldn't want it to have happened to me.
Mr. Page, you wanted to comment on this?
I would love to comment. Should I?
Well, you can sit there. It's not a public, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, but I do know.
Okay.
I know Don Mackey would yell at me if I did.
Speaking of Mr. Mackey, I'm kind of disappointed he wasn't here for our last planning board meeting before his retirement. I want to wish him well.
Again, Ralph Page, one thirty seven Peace Road. Um, I'm in agreement with Pete. Uh, for the reason our subdivision control law and bylaw was written with a, uh, frontage requirement for each zone. Um, it was so that we wouldn't have houses behind houses. What I'm really concerned about is the fact that the Z B A just created a flag lot by allowing a variance frontage. Um, the variance was allowed on Lee Street. It was reduced from a hundred and forty foot frontage to sixty feet.
Right.
And thus allows basically a new house to go directly behind this.
Behind, behind three beautiful new houses.
So I guess my question comes in is if the Z B A is going to allow variances like that, why do we even need the bylaw? Like I said, I think it's on, at that point, it's on a case by case basis. Um, I will tell you, I, in all my years of being involved, I have never seen um, a variance like this, uh, from a hundred and forty foot to a sixty foot frontage. Um, especially when there was, I believe it's thirty seven acres of land.
Never should have happened. He had access to negress on Peace Road.
Are any of those three houses where this is going to be?
They're brand new houses.
And are they appealing? Are they, do you know what the history is?
They, um, to my knowledge, none of them, one, one of the owners was there. Like he said, well, it's a variant. So in this particular situation, I believe the house would have gone in there no matter what. Because even if he took the frontage on Peace Road, he could have put a driveway in on Lee Street and put the house directly behind. But the Z B A did allow it to be created. So, but again, I'm against it. I think there's a reason we did frontages. Um, just like on Peace Road, uh, we made the gentleman put a small street in so that he could do houses.
Right.
Instead of, um, putting a house behind a house and all, he had, he had to have the frontage. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there is also a letter that the board has in their packet.
I was gonna reference it. So I want to thank Rick Marble from two forty three Peace Road. Ordered material to the planning board, really well thought out. Uh, thank you for your comments. Great. Appreciate them. Anyone else want to just be heard on this? But, um, I don't think there's an appetite to move forward on this as it sounds. So I do agree, Rob.
Yeah, so yeah, yeah.
Alright.
Which works, Rocky.
Site plan review waiver. Rob.
Alrighty, I do have language drafted on that one. Um, let me just write down a click note right here. Sorry, Mr. Chair. And I'll pull up in just one second. Alright, so site plan review waiver, uh, the board should have that language in their packet. Um, I think it's stapled to the flag lot.
Yep.
So I'll just look at that really quick. So I'm proposing changes to article nine, specifically nine point three, uh, projects requiring site plan review. So the language that I was going to consider the board, um, I guess pursuing in terms of moving forward would be the administrative uh, granting of waivers for site plan review. So in this case, the planning board is the authority that grants site plan review waivers. Um, in the town of East Long Meadow, any construction that is not a single family residence requires site plan review. You are exempt from it if you meet one of two criteria. The first criteria is for new construction under one thousand square feet. The other is exterior expansions that don't go above twenty five percent of the existing floor area of the structure. Typically the applicant would have to file a request for site plan review waiver and then get approval from the planning board. But I thought just to eliminate one sort of bureaucratic hurdle that could be done administratively with the director of planning um, to grant that waiver after reviewing such plans that are submitted to the department um, to save them the hassle of having to come to a planning board meeting, uh, that you have to catch twice a month. So I believe in twenty twenty three, there were about twenty five of these waivers that were granted. And the language was always kind of vague on how a certain type of project might fit in there until recent bylaw amendments that allowed for, um, certain uses allowed by right that were occupying a commercial space to not need site plan review. And for some reason, there are cases where those individuals will have to get waivers in the past. So the whole point of the amendment is to just make some minor changes to wording. And there's also a criteria where the director of planning, if they did grant this waiver, they would have to state the criteria with clear explanations for each criteria that has to be included in the notice of decision document for that site plan review waiver. So they have to provide proof and evidence that that type of business qualifies for the waiver, but also describe how granting the waiver would have a de minimis impact on the, uh, abutting properties and the district where it's located. So I guess, you know, that's, that's pretty much what I'm proposing here. If you guys had comments, I'm definitely open to them. Thank you.
I think site plan review should go to the planning board.
Uh, we had, I think you had just mentioned, we had, we had made amendments to the site plan waiver requirement.
Right, a little while ago, didn't we?
A little while ago.
So for parking, yeah, only for parking. So the language states that the director of planning can review parking plans if they were to create no more than ten additional parking spaces. But there's nothing in there in terms of the building construction itself. So that's another area where I felt it would make sense to also incorporate that into site plan review waiver, not having to go to the planning board. So the language was, it was very explicit on parking specifically, but not so much on buildings under a thousand square feet in terms of new construction or the other criteria, the twenty five percent increase.
So my recollection, and I hope it's still good, uh, the other changes we made were, so we used to require, let, let's say, I'll just use the reminder building as an example. There was an accountant that was renting space there. They moved out and a law firm moved in. That used to require a site plan waiver.
Yeah.
And we said, no, wait, that's, that's crazy. We're not going to do that anymore. So I know we made the changes. I know we made the changes on the parking.
Yep.
But I don't remember anything other than that. Do you remember Ralph? Cause that would have gone through the town council for approval. Cause it was a change to the zoning ordinance.
So I know, um, the previous director has brought some forwards. Um, and they were basically turned down.
Okay.
Basically sent back for readjustments and I'm not sure if that was in it.
Okay.
I don't remember.
The timing of it all.
Remember exactly what you were saying, um.
Yeah.
Previous director was looking for the ability to do the waivers.
To expedite the process. Yeah, yes. And we were all in favor of that.
Expedite the process, yeah.
But I don't know whether town council was, okay.
I'm just not sure if that was the one that was voted down for some other reasons or whether it passed. And maybe it just hasn't reached E code and stuff yet to get into there.
Yeah. So let's look at, let's look for that language.
I was gonna pull it up. Actually, I'm looking at it now. So parking plan review was the uh, language that actually passed, um, and Bailey, um, drafted that one. So it's actually, it's not in the language of the text per se, but it's like a pending amendment. They still have to put into the language, but it's effective law is the point I'm trying to make. So basically what this says is that's under, um, the same article, um, actually, no, it's not. It is under article five. Special use regulations for off-street parking. So it's not even in the site planner review category at all. In this case, for off-street parking requirements, there's a parking plan requirement for projects. In this case, he added a section where it says the planning board may, may grant waivers to the parking requirements outlined in the section with their, uh, request for waiver. And then also said the director of planning can review parking plans to determine whether or not they go to the planning board for site plan review.
Yeah, I think we're missing a whole chunk and it might just be from transition from one director to the next or somewhere within the town council.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, Bailey brought a whole bunch of changes all of this to us and we went, hold on, this is way too much to bite them up because we can only make one change at a time. And that may be the first group of changes that he brought to us.
Yeah.
Um, and we may just be remembering that site plan law was one that he wanted. He just might not have brought it back. I.
It, it didn't go back because I didn't see it on the documents that were pending, or sorry, already approved amendments that weren't incorporated into the bylaw. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is we did approve it for parking plans.
Okay.
But just not for a site plan review waiver altogether. So right now parking plan, if it's over ten spaces, site plan review goes to the planning board.
Okay.
Um, and I guess, you know, Russell and the rest of the board, if you would feel comfortable with me pulling that language and then we can continue this to a future meeting, discuss it. Um, and I guess, you know, Russell and the rest of the board, if you would feel comfortable with me pulling that language and then we can continue this to a future meeting, discuss it further.
That's fine.
Kind of compare it. I'd be fine with that, too.
This is how I look at it. Five heads are probably better than, not, not saying it against you because you're doing a great job, but five ways to look at it is probably a better thing to do for a lot of, a lot of proposals that come, come over, you know, come by us.
Sure.
That's just the way I look at it. That, you know, less than ten or whatever it was, parking spaces, that's fine. There's a lot of things that, you know, Rob is a different way of looking at it. I do rush.
Yep.
So I, I just don't want to give that up totally.
But also, you know, when you consider a project that the board decides is minuscule enough to where you feel like, is it even warranted at the time?
Well, that would, that language where it could come to the chair who would determine, well, we don't really need to look at this. I, I have no problem with that. But I, I think there has to be, other than the planning director, there has to be some other eyes looking at it and saying, yeah, no.
Could be the building commissioner, too. I mean, typically towns have the building commissioner review it, too.
Yeah, but our building commissioners are kind of like in and out, in and out, in and out. We're residents.
Planning directors are like that, too. I mean, it's just municipal staff in general.
Well, we're trying to avoid that, so. We want you to stay for a while. Like it or not, we're keeping you.
But I know that members of the board are volunteers, and you guys are dedicating your time to do this. You know, I'm in the office seven days a week, sorry, five days a week. That'd be bad.
We're also residents.
Yeah.
We live here. Seventy-three years for me. I don't know about the rest of them, but I'm a resident, and I, I know what I want it to look like, what I don't want it to look like.
Yeah.
Okay, own personal preference.
So let's, obviously, we're going to put this off for now.
Sure.
Thank you. So the next was uh property upkeep and appearance. So uh, this was a suggestion of mine. Uh, thank you for drafting language. Obviously, this is not a hearing. Um, so the first one was on recreational vehicles. And the proposed changes you put in were recreational vehicles and trailers shall be screened from view from the public right of way and or garage at all times. No recreational vehicles and trailers shall be stored in the front yard setback unless screened from view from the public right of way. Another one was temporary dumpsters. Temporary dumpsters for the purpose of collecting and storing trash refuse that is generated on site shall be allowed for a period not to exceed thirty calendar days in a given year. The placement of such dumpsters shall be no less than ten feet from the front side and rear property lines and must be located as to not present any hazards for safety concerns to abutting properties. Um, private garages and sheds. You add, under the definition, um, under private garages, no storage slash shipping containers shall be used as a private garage to store private motor vehicles. And under sheds, a shed is considered an accessory structure used to store equipment, tools, and other related items. Sheds must conform to dimensional requirements for accessory structures. No storage slash shipping container shall be used as a shed. And then parking on improved surfaces. Um, all vehicles parked within the town of East Long Meadow shall be parked on a surface that is in accordance with the town of East Long Meadow Department of Public Works standards and specifications. Such surfaces shall include but are not limited to bituminous asphalt, concrete, masonry, pavers, oil and stone, gravel, trap rock, or other similar materials. No vehicle shall be parked on grass and dirt unless connected to an onsite agricultural operation, and lawn mowers are exempt from this requirement. So, you know, we're not voting on anything, you know, tonight. Also, under recreational vehicles, add uh boats and other personal watercraft. So I want to tell you, this is, whether this goes anywhere or not, you did a great job.
Thank you.
Really, really well done with, with this stuff. There's still some more, yeah, other things that I still want to address. Uh, but I think this is great. Um, you know, we're obviously not going to do anything this evening because we're down two members, but um whether this passes the board or not, I'm just happy raising the issue because these are things that if you look around town.
It's everywhere.
It's everywhere. It's not, of course, I'm saying this, and I'm only one person. I don't find it particularly attractive when there's three R Vs on a lot, or people parking RVs in the front of the house, or you have cars parking on front lawns. I, I think it diminishes the property value of that property, but also the property values of residents around the neighborhood. Um, it also goes back to just the general discussion the town needs to have on whether they want to separate the position of building uh commissioner and having a separate zoning enforcement officer. So I'm glad that we're going to raise some of this, and obviously, we're going to have to have public hearings on this in the future. I have to imagine it, there will be people who will not take it well, and it'll be an interesting public hearings, but that's why you have public hearings.
So the zoning enforcement officer piece would have to be a.
Or the town council issue, yeah.
Well, general bylaw amendment, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But I guess in terms of this language, Russell, was there anything you thought should be included or changed or modified?
So under recreational vehicles, I would limit um the number of recreational vehicles to be allowed on any one lot. So.
That's tricky because zoning bylaws can't restrict people's rights in regards to taking rights away.
Well, I'm.
I guess number of vehicles on a lot, you know, it's somebody's vehicles. I know there's a state law that allows for us to regulate how many unregistered vehicles there are on a lot. But I do see it as a taking if you propose a limit on the number of registered recreational vehicles, somebody could feel like, what if they have a twenty-acre lot?
And they could have a motorhome.
Yeah.
Eighteen-foot boat, two C do's that are all registered to them.
Yeah.
Just, yeah. Keep them out of sight, that's all I want to do.
Yeah, if they're kept out of sight, I mean, yeah.
That's why I caution.
Otherwise, if they're not kept out of sight, it's a storage, it's a storage facility.
But I would caution.
Not a residential lot.
Setting like a specific number.
Okay.
Of those vehicles, I would say if you could just put conditions in there that regulate uh placement or screening of these vehicles or put them in a garage, that's probably a lot more effective.
Recent.
Yeah.
It is. It will, it would be an interesting evening.
There'll be a lot of push on that one.
Yeah. You know, and, and while part of being on a board, sometimes you raise issues. Sometimes they pass, sometimes they don't, but I think it's worth um the effort to see, as we all know, we're going to hold a public hearing. It'll be a recommendation to the town council. So we might recommend it, and it goes to town council, and they go, no way, we're not doing this. And at least we're raising issues, which I think are important to be addressed.
I think it goes right along with the flag lots and everything else. Some sort of conformity. People drive through the town, they go, that was a nice clean town, rather than they were just stuck haphazardly in people's yards and so forth.
So true. I think this, before you guys vote or anything, has to go to the council. And then the council then in return, if they think it's worthy, sends it back to you, the craft, to do what you need to hold the public hearings upon.
Um, you was, so actually, correction that, so you um throw it back to the planning board to hold a public hearing. And then once the planning board's public hearing, it goes back to the council for reviewing. Yeah, so public hearing, public hearings. But you could, um.
And it seems like the charter makes us go back and forth.
The state law says the same process, too. So I would say, you know, if you're content with this language or if you want to make changes to it, you could make change to it in the public hearing format. That's totally fine. I mean, we're doing that with the dog handling right now. Um, but if you feel comfortable moving it forward, obviously, you could take a vote to recommend the town council, to, to have it sent to town council for their initial review, then have them kind of give it back to you for the public hearing.
Well, I don't want to do that unless the other two members of the board are here.
Here, yeah.
As well, I think it's.
Because it, right now, I mean, people have, if they have a motorhome parked beyond the front of their building or their house, whatever it is, and it's like, they're usually on the grass. And there's going to be a lot of people buying gravel.
Yeah.
Which is better for them anyway. The grass isn't good, but there's a lot of them on the grass, a lot of parking on grasses.
Parking on grass is also terrible for the environment, but it's also bad for the abutting property owners. I can understand the agricultural exemption piece of it because a farmer has a tractor that's going to be on a field, right? They have to have a large vehicles close to their crops or to animals, which is fine.
That's a farm.
Yeah, that's a farm, exactly.
Totally different setup.
Exactly, but, but if you have an RV or a car parked on your lawn, you know, you're going to kill the grass. If it rains a lot, you're going to cause more flooding of nearby properties and not to mention the catch basins on the street. So I think the improved surfaces one is definitely one that's long overdue to be included, um, just for safety concerns. And when you think about it, but I guess the other issues pertaining to the screening, the garaging of vehicles, even temporary dumpsters, does the board seem content with how the, the language is written there?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with the dumpster language for sure. Um, does that run into an issue with any new houses? The shipping container thing, I'm fine with.
Not necessarily, because if you're down on a house, it doesn't take more than thirty days to do it. It's usually pretty quick. I mean, I've seen buildings come down in like three days in some areas.
New build?
New build, I mean, you'd only use the dumpster if you're just trying to get rid of old materials that are already there. Um, if you're moving around dirt, I mean, you kind of would use it again on site or truck it out if you're moving gravel. Um, but if you're building something, they could just store the materials on site. They wouldn't really, if they had a dumpster, I mean, they probably would use it for less than thirty days.
There was a uh a house on Westwood, no, on Maple Shade last week, pretty close to the bank, you know, uh, People's Bank. They actually had not a tractor trailer, not the cab, but the long storage parked there for about a week while they were maybe moving or whatever. I mean, it was like a tractor trailer uh container. And it was like, so out of place, you know, but and I'm not, you know, and I don't want anyone to think who might be watching this that I'm trying to um make us long metal. I don't want to be long metal, but I, I'm concerned that, as Pete said, you start to go through town a little bit, and it looks more like um disorder. Um, and I can't imagine, like it is, like with, you know, we're not supposed to have commercial vehicles parked overnight on residential lots. And unless, it seems like, unless one of us calls the building inspector and reports it, you know, it doesn't get, it doesn't get taken care of. And now there are streets where you could have twelve houses on the street and there are six commercial vehicles. To me, that ends up being a business zone and not a residential zone. Because we should not be the parking lot for the business that these people work for. Now, I know there will be some people, because when we had, this was heard by this board eight, six or seven years ago, you did have people come in and they go, I work for a utility, and we have to go out during an emergency. And, you know, they, they raised that issue. But we're also now to the point now where you see people who work for other towns bring their
Yes.
town vehicles and park them on the street or on their residential properties overnight. And I, I just think that gets away from the whole residential feel of what a residential zone should be, so.
Well, that's why I went through all the pain and agony of the, the home-based trade bylaw. There has to be screening for, for commercial, commercial vehicles. A vehicle with a sign, it's supposed to be screened. It's not supposed to be in the front yard. It's supposed to be screened, period.
Or garage.
Or garage, right. So I could, I could tell you five right now.
I.
Constantly, it's there every single day. That's why we need a zoning enforcement officer.
So the other, so a couple we didn't get to, you haven't gotten to yet. So one of them was the storage of boats. Remember, we were not going to have boats parked in front of the house.
Wasn't that supposed to be?
Excuse me?
They're not supposed to be.
Well, no, there's nothing in the bylaw that prohibits that right now.
Well, if you were to.
What a recreational vehicle?
So we kind of killed two birds with one stone there.
That definition of recreational vehicle, okay.
Because we include boats, definition.
Okay.
It's got a little problem when it says uh uh, town of East Long Meadow shall be parked on service that is in accordance with the town of East Long Meadow Department of Public Works. Well, if you want to dig up your lawn and put some gravel in the back of your house and put a vehicle on it, does that have to be in accordance with the standards of the D P W? That's kind of what it's saying there. It's the bottom of the page. D P W standards, I mean.
Parking vehicles on it? Yeah, but the standards aren't too strict. It talks about the type of material you have to use.
What's that?
It talks about the type of material.
Talking about what if it's in the rear of the.
Yeah, and you want to, you want to put your motorhome back there, so you, you have somebody come in and take off the topsoil and then put gravel down, but that doesn't have to be with the D P W standards. I don't think, does it? I mean, who are they going to say that, oh, you need six inches or you need four inches? It's got to be twelve feet wide or twenty feet long or?
So usually the standards apply to bituminous concrete and deep surfaces. Um, so.
Basically.
Regulations may not even have.
Trap rock.
Those are just examples of improved surfaces. I mean, the D P W regulations may not even have all those in them already. They might just focus on the concrete and the bituminous asphalt. I could double check on that to make sure that that's not going to create any issues with, you know, somebody's trying to extend their driveway to make it ass, or sorry, um.
Oh, no, that's, that's not what I'm talking about.
No.
Talking about you have lawn, but you don't want to park a vehicle on because it creates oxygen and makes rust.
Yep.
So you say, well, I'm going to, I'm going to put gravel back there.
Hmm.
I, I just want to go do it myself. I want it to have a guy come in, take the dirt out, put gravel down. What standard is there for the D P W to go by, and how can they tell you what to do on your own land like that? I just think that's a little bit extraneous.
Well, in that example, you're not parking a vehicle on it. You're just putting gravel on.
You're going to, you're going to, you're going to put your motorhome on it, or you're going to put your boat on it behind your yard.
You'd have to park it on there, but it wouldn't be attached to the driveway at all.
I'm just saying, I'm saying that Department of Public Works standards and specifications should not be in there.
Okay.
In my mind.
Great discussion. You've been sitting here patiently. Did, did you want to add to any of this or?
Certainly, yes.
Okay.
My issue is canceled, but I want to hear some.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I wonder why you're still here.
Oh, okay, great.
Good for you.
Are you thinking, who are these people? All right, so um.
Can I actually make a comment real quick?
Yeah.
So Pete.
Yes.
What if we change that to make those standards apply to only the specific type of uh pavement, so asphalt and concrete.
Perfect.
And then everything else.
Should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can look at the standards and see what those standards already cover.
Yep.
And leave out those things that aren't covered. Cause I think it's important that people design driveways to be thick.
A hundred percent, but it went down to.
Regulations there.
But it went down to ma- maestory pavers, oil, stone, gravel, trap rock, that's kind of.
Yeah. It's not really the standard anymore anyways. People just do asphalt, concrete driveways, so, okay.
I'm not just talking about driveway, I'm just talking about.
Surface.
You want to park your, your recreational vehicle or something in accordance with the bylaws. You don't want to put it on grass, so you just decide to put gra- gravel in.
Yeah.
And it's just a few inches of gravel rather than, than, than the grass.
Okay. Could definitely do that.
All right, so let's, um, let's put this off until our next meeting, which is September seventeenth, right? Drone bylaw.
Oh, actually, Russ, um, well, nevermind, it's not public hearing, sorry. So for the drone bylaw, um, that was brought up to us by Cassie, who's not here.
Yeah.
So I just kind of.
Put it off.
Put it off for now, yeah.
Okay.
So just ask the board terms of clarifications for the next meeting. So topics we're going to be discussing, I'm just going to look at your agenda.
Good.
Are going to be property upkeep, maintenance, and the drone bylaw, and that's it.
Yep, and you're going to make a presentation on accessory dwelling units?
I am, and I'll actually briefly talk about the state law when I do my report at the end of this meeting.
All right, your report.
Did the state just say that you could put an accessory dwelling unit anywhere you want, right?
That's what he's going to talk about.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the state said it, so what are we going to be able to say about it?
It's hard to talk about.
Crazy. It is crazy.
All right, so.
It's just like flag lot. It's a lot. It's a regular lot.
All right, let me just pull it back. Just put it quick, and I'll go into that.
All right, so I'll start with that because that topic came up. So it's called the Affordable Homes Act. It was passed earlier this month by a legislator. Governor signed it um into law. So the one provision of this law allows for accessory dwelling units to be created by right statewide um in all residential districts. I'm going to have to clarify that because the language was sort of vague on which districts you could allow it in, but I know for a fact residential districts would have to have it by right. You can still do site plan review as a requirement for ADUs if a town so chooses to do that. Um, owner occupancy requirements, though, on the other hand, for both the main house and the A D U itself are no longer acceptable under state law. And that's for, that's going to be inserted into section six of forty-eight. So in this case, you can no longer require a covenant submitted by an applicant where they have to live on the property at all times. The state's saying that you can't allow for that.
Ah, Jesus.
Um, the law itself will not go into effect until February third of twenty twenty-five because of the hundred and eighty-day uh. The law itself will not go into effect until February third, twenty twenty-five, because of the hundred eighty day uh, period until it goes into effect, the date it's signed. Uh, the good news about this hundred eighty day window is it gives us the ability to draft a bylaw, hold the public hearings before February third. So when I give this presentation next meeting on the seventeenth, it's gonna talk about the facts. It's gonna look at our own bylaw. I'm gonna give suggestions on what you could incorporate. I think site planner review should definitely be considered by the board in this situation for a lot of these.
And we can be more restrictive, correct?
You can be restrictive, but you can't deny it ever. You, you have to allow it. You ha- you can put conditions on there that are reasonable. So section six allows for reasonable conditions, but they can't be unreasonable. So for example, solar, you can't make it so it's almost impossible for them to build something there. You would have to be reasonable in how you would go about putting those conditions in. You would have to have site plans. You can require site plans for these if you do site plan review. Um, you could have them do extra criteria on top of the bare minimum for it if you wanted to. So I would go through all that with the board the next meeting, give recommendations to say, here are things to keep in mind when we're doing this bylaw. Unfortunately, because the state law happened, we kind of should go ahead and start doing this ASAP, uh, just so we're not caught in position where somebody comes in and tries to do it by right. And state law would supersede us, and we couldn't do anything to kind of regulate it.
Can these structures be multi-dwelling?
So they can only be one dwelling.
Okay.
Essentially, what they're trying to do here is make uh, lots higher density. I know, but these ADUs can either be detached as a single dwelling unit on the same lot as an existing house. They can be attached, so say as like an addition to the house with a separate entrance and a separate meter box. Or they can be contained entirely within the main building itself. As sort of like an interior apartment, like an in-law apartment that's not separate.
Can we, can we require one versus the other?
You could. You could require only uh, detached, only and attached, but you have to allow for it. State law allows for them to be up to nine hundred square feet.
So I, I'm saying, could Easton Meadow pass a zoning, you know, requirement that we will only allow attached accessory dwelling units and not detached?
I would have to look at the language of the state law a little bit further to give you a better answer on that.
Makes it a little more palatable.
Because it really comes down to almost like a flag lot thing.
Yeah. And it's gonna change the total character of the town.
Oh, yeah.
People are gonna put these up. If you're gonna have a.
Rent them.
Yeah.
Do.
Yeah, and so you're gonna go from four people in a fifteen hundred square foot house. You're gonna have four more people because, or three more people on a nine hundred square foot mini house. And so the density is gonna increase dramatically. It'll be impact on the schools, on the town services, on everything.
Or the rain.
I think that how our local legislative delegation voted on that.
It has to be a bill of a lot. So just to go back on the issue of allowing just attached ADUs, so the state law, when I read it, didn't really specify that. It said these things could be attached or detached, but didn't say that towns couldn't prohibit one or the other. You just have to allow for it to happen.
I want you to check that.
I'll look into that when I do.
It's important. That's really important.
I agree.
Because if we allow attached, there's a higher likelihood that only family members are going to go in there. And if you did a detached, you're also gonna, you're, the likelihood is you will have non-family members on that lot as well, and I'm not
Oh, yeah.
Just, you know, I'm not disparaging not family members.
No.
But I, but I think the relationship is, is different.
You can extend your driveway, you could park, park back in the backyard in a house or whatever.
Drop things in.
I think I'll go build a couple of my, my uh, land. I got a big yard.
Has to be built off of your house.
Yeah.
I think that's a lot. Yeah, and then we can go from having, you know, four recreational vehicles to eight recreational vehicles, you know, because.
Beautiful.
I'm being sarcastic, but not that I ever am, so. Yeah. Well, thank you. I, I look forward to the discussion.
Sure, and I'll go over the other updates very quickly. We have eight minutes till. So I guess upcoming meetings, September third is canceled because of the state primaries. Uh, September seventeenth is on schedule. October first, I'll be on vacation. October fifteenth, November fifth is canceled because of the general elections, federal and state, and then November nineteenth is a meeting after that. Terms of upcoming public hearings, we don't have any filed at the moment, except for the ones that we just continued at this meeting. And I mentioned I'll give a presentation on ADUs. In terms of events, we still have upcoming informal center town district discussion, August twenty ninth, group petitioners with Lost or Food Truck. Is that still happening, Rebecca? Right? And she is working on, are you working on getting a panelist for that, or is that still kind of?
Andre LaRue, who is the former executive director of Smarco of Massachusetts, is coming to speak to us.
So if you like to talk about zoning while eating lobster, you can definitely show up to that.
Um, that you have to pay for.
That you have to pay for, but still good lobster.
Not for free.
Yeah.
Event's free, but you have to pay for the lobster in the drink. There you go. And then last two updates, so we're using OpenGov now for all of our planning board and ZVA permits. So you might notice that the next uh, scheduled hearing for something, you might see an application form looks different. This helps us as staff to streamline these permits across town. So we can have other departments kind of weigh in a lot more efficiently, and this helps us keep track of them a lot better. So we're doing that moving forward for everything with the exception of the subdivision plan review. A and Rs can be filed through this, but not the subdivision stuff at the moment. And then uh, I'm gonna be working with DPW on considering projects for a complete streets grant program funded by Mass DOT.
A complete what?
Complete streets. So basically, it's funny that you can use to do road reconstruction, sidewalks, et cetera. Um, a lot of towns benefit from doing sidewalk reconstruction with these funds, so I was gonna start working with DPW on getting that process started if they're interested in pursuing that.
Just they give us some more money so the roads can be improved.
Yeah, that's what this grant program would do.
It will.
Yeah, if we get funding for it, we could definitely do reconstruction projects, so.
I mean, would it be considerable?
Yeah, uh, projects can go up to half a million.
That's about a quarter mile road.
Depends. I think I've seen them go as high as a million for over five years. I have to look at the specifications and see, but usually, yeah, you can't do a whole lot with them. But it's money, we can use it for stuff. Might as well take it while we can, so.
Well, there's been a lot of sidewalk work lately.
Looks good too.
Yeah.
Looks real good.
This would help.